Call to order the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council, roll call please.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Mayor Tim Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Orr?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on matters not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to three minutes. Anyone out there in the vast public? Are there any hand raised, any emails? No. Okay, then, we will close this section and move to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Then I would call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So much.
We have a motion at second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion in the second, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Staff reports, report staff communications, city manager, page twenty-eight in our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. Staff, first of all, I just wanted to mention, yesterday, I believe it was around five o'clock, we did have a fire at the infiltration gallery.
It's about four P.M.
Or four P.M., yeah. So, there was no damage to the infrastructure, so there's no damage to the water system, still is operating. But it was caused apparently by some juveniles with fireworks, if I'm correct on that, Randy.
That's what I heard with my own ears, yeah.
So again, we just want to encourage parents to, you know, really educate their kids about the proper use of fireworks in particularly brushy areas and without adult supervision. Very important, because the fire potentially could have been worse in a different year during drought or something along those lines. But we do appreciate the Riedel Volunteer Fire Department for getting out there and extinguishing flame in relatively short order. So thank you. So I don't have a whole lot to report on this agenda's staff update. I will say we do have an agenda item later to discuss, the former Todd property here in Riedel, that staff is having multiple meetings with our city engineer on the various projects coming forward with the city. And we are also working on a new grant application through the Haskin litigation grants that went through BIMA for one of the city council's longtime priority projects, which is solar down at the city's preparation yard. And we're very excited about that potential could be a unique project. They have been responding to us and helping us to make the grant as competitive as possible through the process, and we really appreciate giving us the help with that application. And then hopefully our next council meeting can provide an update regarding our Monument Road slip-out on twenty seventeen winter storms. We had a slip-out of Monument Road at the boundary of the city and the county, so the city and the county are cost-sharing in this particular project, and our bids have come back pretty good. But now BIMA's holding up the final approval, and the contractor is only verbally pulling their bid currently. So it may have to go out to rebid if BIMA doesn't respond. And we are working with Commerce and Health and Service Office on that particular issue. And then just one other kind of just fun note. Some of the new vehicle graphics for the police department are rolling out. I think the community services officer's vehicle has the basic new design, so you see that in the parking lot, check it out. We will be rolling that out over the next few months to the other vehicles. So kind of exciting news. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor Tim?
I have no questions. Thank you, and thank you for taking the entire department and the police department, because everybody was there right away. Yeah.
Got it. Councilmember Orr?
No questions for me.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yeah, Travis, I just have a question on your page here for the schedule for logistics with Castle Tire for the tire drop off of it. Do we know when that's going to be?
Yeah, it's going to be on Saturday, August nineteenth. It's going to be from ten A.M. to two P.M. And Clean California through Caltrans are going to be advertising this on behalf of the state. I'm sure we actually just executed that agreement earlier today, so we'll be getting the word out on that. But Castle Tire, the company will be providing the two trailers where the tires will be repeded.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And she goes, just to say, the car graphics, they make the old times. Who designed them?
Police Department of Seattle.
It looks nice, I like the colors.
Councilmember Wilson?
All right. No questions.
Okay, are there any hand raised, any emails, anyone in the public? Audience there, okay, then we will close. District law items. Conduct public hearing and approve the list of delinquent sewer accounts to send to the auditor controller for placement on the tax rolls. Page thirty-three in our packets. City manager?
I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Travis. Good evening, Mayor Barnes and members of the city council. On July sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the Riedel City Council adopted ordinance three nine nine, that two zero two three. To allow the city to send delinquent sewer charges to the auditor controller and add them to the tax roll as a lien. The city is required to follow protocol for health and safety code five four seven three, including holding a public hearing. During this hearing, the city must hear and consider all objections or protest to the written report referred to in the notice. If the city finds that the protest is made by the owners of a majority of the separate parcels of property described in the report, then the report shall not be adopted and the charges shall be collected separately from the tax roll and do not constitute a lien against any parcel of land. Upon conclusion of this hearing, the city may adopt, revise, change, reduce, or modify, and charge or leave the rule. Any or all objections shall make its determination upon each charge as described in the written report, which determination shall be final. On or before August tenth of each year, following the final determination, the clerkship file with the county auditor controller, a copy of the report pursuant to section five four seven three. It is staff recommendation to open the public hearing, receive public input and deliberation. Furthermore, staff recommends approving the final list of delinquent sewer accounts to send to the auditor controller for placement on the tax roll. Thank you for your time this evening, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And then Director Dan Horn. Councilmember Woodall?
No.
Councilmember Wilson? Councilmember Orr?
No.
Mayor Tim?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Are there any members of the public who have any questions or protests? Are there any emails or hand raised or comments or protest? Then are there any discussions, further discussions that we had last week? Okay, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there is a motion to approve the final list of delinquent sewer accounts to send to the auditor controller for placement on the tax rolls. Is there a motion? I'll leave it at the motion. There is a motion, is there a second? Second. We have a motion in the second. Motion carries five zero. Receive staff update on the status of the former Todd property, now owned by the state of California, page forty-one in our packet, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. So for people who are just not aware what the Todd property is, that is just a common known feature that's used for the property. It is the large, roughly eighteen-acre parcel undeveloped on the southwest corner of U.S. one-on-one and Davis Street. It's a kind of direct smack center of the city of Riedel. So that property is undeveloped. Formerly, it was a pasture with one small ranch house and barn adjacent to it. It's actually composed of two parcels, which are listed in the, the numbers are listed on the agenda, if folks are curious in the exact parcel configuration there. So historically, the city has been interested in seeing the Todd property developed, as most cities are interested in seeing development of particularly poor, undeveloped parcels. This stretches back many decades of different attempts and different approaches in terms of development. And so, including recently, the, however, the Todd property did sell on April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three for one million eight hundred twenty thousand dollars, and the buyer was the state of California. So the property is now under the control of the California Department of General Services, or DGS for short, let's say, the umbrella organization that handles a lot of the common internal issues between the state and state departments, including real estate for the state of California. The property, what looks to be the future home, the property is proposed to be the future home of the Humboldt Delmore CalFire regional headquarters. So the current location for CalFire headquarters is in Fortuna, kind of essentially located off of North Fortuna Boulevard there in town. So we do know a couple of things. CalFire has been interested in at least two different locations, potentially three different locations, either within the city of Fortuna or immediately adjacent to the city of Fortuna. And we know that one of which was highly preferred by the local headquarters. However, for reasons that are still not entirely clear, the state eventually moved forward with the Riedel location. So some of the parcels that they were looking for were equal size, and some of them were on the ten acre size scale. Today, staff has had two meetings with representatives in Humboldt Delmore and Yuna, and what has been conveyed to us is that CalFire intends to use the full eighteen acres, that they're beginning a design process that's likely to last about two years. And occupancy of the site after design, construction could be as early as two thousand twenty-eight or two thousand thirty is probably a little bit more of a realistic timeline for that site to be fully developed and then ready to be occupied. So according to local representatives of CalFire, the agency is looking at the next hundred years of expansion. And that what this, what we can infer from that is that this probably does not necessarily mean that all eighteen acres will be developed by two thousand thirty, but will be set aside for potential development for potentially a hundred years from now, the year twenty-one, twenty-three. So that is what the local CalFire representatives have indicated, which is that their staffing has expanded significantly, that their role is increasing, not decreasing, for obvious reasons. And they have also indicated to us potential co-location with the United States Forest Service, which is currently headquartered in Eureka, however, it's unlikely that the whole headquarters will be moved, but Riedel has potentially certain components that could be moved there. So why should this be a concern to the Riedel community? I will get to that, but I want to first point out that there are several benefits potentially to CalFire coming to Riedel. One is CalFire is a significant employer, and the Todd property has always needed, and what the city's always desired out of the location is some sort of anchor, not just for the site itself, but for the community itself. So different ideas have been tossed around, some of them pretty fantasy oriented, like a Home Depot or water park or something along those lines. But certainly, a CalFire regional headquarters would be an icon and identifiable central hub to the community. It would turn Riedel into almost the CalFire community. That would be in the broader scheme of Humboldt County and the region. When people think of Riedel and they go, what's there? You know, some people might refer to the old mini golf, you know, so on and so forth. In this case, it would be CalFire. So it would have a positive connotation that certainly the community, I think, would embrace and be very receptive to. It's a, it's a positive, home of the heroes type arrangement that will be positive. In addition to which, there would be obviously a lot of employees on site who would, you know, want access to lunch services, so on and so forth, be interested in potentially moving to the town for a shorter commute or to the general area. So there are several great things about this development. There are some concerns here, as there would be with any type of development. So under the current course, the site would not be available for housing or any kind of commercial-type development, which creates a little hole in the city's general plan, which potentially impacts the city's regional housing needs allocation compliance. In the current general plan, one hundred housing units are identified as potentially being developable at the site. So RENA is important because it's this guideline and rule from the state saying how we meet the housing targets that are the statewide priority. And so right now, with the Danico project having come online about three or four years ago, Riedel actually pretty much meets all of its RENA allocations, meaning we don't have any problem with the state or meeting the state's housing goals. If anything, the city is short on what is considered upper income housing. Actually, that's where we don't necessarily have the biggest problem in terms of RENA compliance. But obviously, a hundred units is a hundred units. We're a pretty significant dent into that. That potentially impacts future transportation funding, because always implicit in the city's RENA allocation is a threat, that if we don't meet RENA allocation numbers, that the state can sanction transportation dollars as a result. And of course, they're in a much broader battle with other very wealthy Southern California cities over development, but it still has that potential impact here in Riedel. Also, attached to your packet is an RFQ, so request for qualifications for essentially project management and development services from Department of General Services. And that starts on page forty-two of your packet. And really, the most important part is right on the top of that first page on page forty-two, discussing the project description, which indicates some of the concerns that staff has looking at this is its own independent water system, its own independent leach field system. We don't really see anything here that says integrate with the community in any way. So one of the concerns we have is the island effect, taking this parcel, cutting off connectivity, you know, the potential for connectivity between neighborhoods, and placing this large block under restricted use. It takes prime real estate for commercial and housing development, turns it over to the state. The state largely gets to bypass any local regulations, any local permitting processes, any method for the city to try to mitigate and integrate the design and the process to the city. So we can force them to consider certain impacts, and certainly through EIR, they would have to take a look at that. But largely, the city is, well, the city has to comply with state law. The state does not have to comply with its own laws. So hence the disparity between housing being the number one priority here and then a hundred units being taken out of potential development, Danville Road, and we're talking about development that could have occurred in five years or a hundred years, and still will be taken off the table entirely. We've also, in doing some research, looked and discovered that really comparable facilities, headquarters, facilities throughout the state of California are cited on five to seven acre plots. So eighteen acres is quite a large piece of land for a facility that currently sits on about three acres in Fortuna right now. We know it's undersized, they need more space, certainly. But again, this is not necessarily the highest and best use of the land. And it also potentially puts it into a situation where surplus land in the state of California, the government is now looking at state-owned surplus land and turning that over to low-income housing developments. Again, with it being state-owned, no real local control, no real guidance. And that could happen as a part of this plan, or that could happen ten years from now, or so on and so forth, depending on where the priorities of the state move. And obviously, housing is something that is going to take decades to solve. So, you know, moving, the other implication here is, and I know that the council knows all about this, and we've been working on this and identifying it as a major problem, but a thriving commercial core is really the lifeblood of any city. So the ability to have residents, visitors be able to stay in a hotel, gas stations, commerce is really what funds a city operation. Under the way that the state of California works, the way that revenues work, it's really important for there to be a thriving business center. So this essentially takes eighteen acres of prime green property completely out of the economic equation for Riedel. And even if all the CECL rules and everything were to apply, CECL doesn't cover the financial impact of proposed developments. We know that the cost to support the police department continues to go up year after year. We know that the city has to do something regarding the economic developments. The council's identified the economic development plan, and the Todd property was really one of the central components of that economic development plan. So in the long term, this is potentially was, well, certainly there would be some benefit to it. The reality is that we believe, the staff believes, and I know that the members of the community that I've talked to and council members that I've talked to have all said that there's got to be a way to meet everybody's needs with eighteen acres, it's such a huge space, that CalFire can get everything that it wants. And that, some of it can be split for commercial and housing development in the future, and that would make a better end product, that integrates with the community, that provides additional economic activity in the community, long-term sustainable development, housing, and all of that. And so that is what we have been trying with the state, with the representatives from CalFire, with our local legislative leaders, to try to impress upon them that, you know, there is a third way of doing this, and that is going to be what everybody wants, including the governor, who's stated time and again that housing is the number one priority. And so, you know, that is, right now, you know, staff's take on that. And we certainly want to hear back from the council in terms of where you would like to see us go, either back off on this or, you know, continue investigating. But right now, what staff is proposing to do would be to continue to monitor and expand the monitoring of this proposal, including reaching out to the Housing and Community Development Department, the State Architects, State Lands, and Public Works commissions, in addition to legislative opportunities. So we've already been engaging, for example, Senator Mike Twire on this issue. We intend to add to that advocacy. We also need to start identifying potential impacts of this development and also just making the broader public aware of the proposal to help identify those impacts, because this would be a budding neighborhood. This would be potential traffic impacts, you know, potential radio communications tower. There's drainage impacts, there's interfacing with the water and wastewater system, if in fact that's going to happen. So there's a lot to look at here, and unfortunately, investigating those comes really at the cost of the city to identify those and, you know, suss out what needs to be done to better integrate the project to the community. So with that, I will return it to the council, and again, I'm just looking for general direction from the councils to, you know, what individually you'd like to see and as a group you'd like to see. And again, I remind the council that, you know, we can, we can drop the issue and not further investigate, not continue to try to provide updates, and then all the way ramped up to further discussion. Obviously, anything that would go to a closed session, we don't want to discuss here in the open session, but this is our opportunity to kind of discuss this in the open session.
Thank you. Councilmember Orr?
I absolutely think we should pursue questioning and investigating. Like you said, that's a huge chunk of what could be added to new business. I mean, we're limited on the downtown, on the main street. There are little space that we could use, but especially freeway front space stuff. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson?
I agree with Councilmember Orr. I'd like to see, pursue what you can, I don't think, yeah, all the proper handling of the agency has done, but the place of the, it is disappointing, but like, I think you made a comment about the station required everyone else to apply. the station required everyone else to apply, and it was what they don't actually apply on. Yeah, so, um, this would, but I, I do encourage that, um, you would do that. Yeah, I have a question. Uh, when they say they're even that independent water system, are they looking to draw more out of the river or are they looking to just take our water system and put it into a closed loop like Disneyland or something? But if they use their own water system, what is, what is that?
So according to the, um, the RFQ, it would be essentially a development of a well at the site. And I will tell you that we just had a conversation, we had a meeting with the city engineer on unrelated subject and we brought this up and, um, and he said that that was highly unlikely to uh, produce any, uh, real results, uh, just based on the groundwater, how, uh, you know, the composition of the ground and just below the surface, that there's mostly a sheeting effect across much of town. Um, that, uh, that goes directly into the river. There is a, uh, a fairly high water table, but just below that is essentially chalk or something that's impermeable. So you have to drill either super deep, um, or, um, or you're likely not to, um, not to hit something. And then just as a side note, we have had a developer who drilled, I believe, a six-hundred foot well on the Dinsmore Plateau, spent that money and came up with absolutely nothing. So while Riedel is, there's no shortage of, of water in the immediate area. There are certain, uh, places where water is plentiful, just sinking a well center in town is not going to be sufficient for a facility of that size. So, and, and if it is, uh, if they happen to get lucky, it's going to be more on a kind of residential size to, to meet their needs. I don't think it's cost-effective, um, for them to do anything other than to connect to the city's water system. Uh, you know, but we'll, 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 we'll see, um, what exactly they, they come up with over the next couple of years.
I'd go for the fourth term, please. Business of the, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pottin?
Um, I would say keep investigating and pursuing. I mean, what does it seem like when you talk to the local representatives? Like, how does, I mean, you don't have to answer that, that's a weird question, but that, that's the question that's in my brain. It's like, where is it going and what is the vibe? But.
Yeah, well, first of all, our, our local representatives are great, they're fantastic people. Uh, they're really heroes in the community and have done a lot of really great things. Um, you know, but in an agency the size of CalFire, I think, uh, these decisions are being made at the very top level. And, uh, that involves a state bureaucratic process that involves DGS, which is a whole other animal. That mostly serves internally, uh, the state apparatuses, very much not a public interfacing agency. They're DGS, not CalFire, DGS. So.
Wow, okay, well, tell them it's haunted or offensive by sand worms. So, thank you. Yeah, uh, yeah, no, your tech colleagues, it probably is haunted by that. Um, yeah, I would, I would agree with the, the previous investigators too, just, yeah, do what you can. And keep letting us know, I'm very curious. And sand worms, thank you.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yeah.
Same here, just through all the avenues and like my grandmother used to say, squeaky wheels get grease. So just keep adding. So I think we're all in agreement. Yeah, are there any, uh, public comments?
I just had a question. When is the next time that the RENA numbers are coming out that we're going to have to report that we no longer have those one hundred slots? When would that happen?
So I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. I do know that the state is re, uh, that there is a process underway to recalculate RENA numbers. In which case, uh, most likely they would only become larger and not smaller. So top of, uh, this portion being taken now, um, there is going to be a new reformulation, I should call it, any sort of lineup. On top of that.
Well, any emails or hand raised? And I think you have, you have a tweet from us?
Yes.
All the emails. Next update from the mayor on a citizen's recognition or earthquake response. So this is, um, back in, in December, after December twentieth and, um, January first, when everybody came, you know, to help the city, to help, um, distribute food, to give you water, to do all of the, the good things. There were, um, the whole community came out, the whole community tried to do what they could do and, and still are trying to do what, you know, we can do to help each other. There were three young men, however, who went above and beyond what most young men would be doing, you know? They came out on their own without being asked and they were there every day. A teenager, an eleven and a ten-year-old, I believe, at the time. And so I, I really thought that they should be recognized. And one of the most important things in my mind, um, to keep youth engaged, to keep them, you know, invested in the city. And these three, um, kids were totally invested. We need to recognize them, we need to know, let them know that we see them and that we appreciate them. And what they did, it was absolutely noticed. And, um, so to that end, I thought, well, you know, um, I talked to, um, someone back in January and, and talked about, um, a resolution, a problem, a resolution, I think, is where they come in and you, you recognize them. But I thought, you know, we don't have a big group here to recognize and it, it, youth probably aren't going to be, I mean, they'll be happy with a, a piece of paper, but that piece of paper is going to get lost. And so I thought it would be a nice thing if we did like a good citizens award to, to these three young men. On a, give them a plaque, um, during Wildwood days when there's an audience where their friends can see them being recognized and appreciated. They can be applauded. The city as, you know, we, we can be there and show them that we as the city appreciated everything that they did to help. And so to that end, I went to city manager and asked him if that's, you know, something that we could do. Um, and, um, he got the city clerk and we had a conversation about it and decided, well, that's probably something we could do. And I thought, well, but the city council really needs to be on board with this too. Um, and, um, hopefully be able to come to the, uh, I, I'm thinking, you know, the Sunday of the barbecue, um, and, and just show them just we're all there for them like they were there for us. And so I just, that is an update, it's just, um, if, if there was any questions or objections to it, then, you know, that needs to be, to be said, but this, all this, um, item is about is recognizing the youth that stood up for the city of Riedel. And, um, I really truly think that by doing this, it's a way that we can let other youth in Riedel know that we are paying attention, we do appreciate it and hopefully engage the youth to become more involved in the city and different activities and so that's basically what this, this item was or is. And so, um, yeah, if there are any questions, Councilmember Woodall?
No, so are we talking about putting this at the barbecue or maybe at the parade? Putting it in the parade?
I hadn't thought about putting him in the parade. I was thinking at the barbecue, you know, because of, um, your, to give him a present.
Whatever I do is fine, because you're right, kids need to be, you know, noticed for what they do. And I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Mayor Pottin?
I also think it's a great idea, um, that the, the teenager kid was, I mean, I saw him day in, day out, every single day for over a month. And he was there early in the morning. He was there till close. I think I brought the kid cookies at one point and he, I mean, he just, yeah, he, he, they were really, really sudden. Um, and then there's so many pictures of the little ones handing out waters and stuff. So I, I do, I really like this idea. If you have any contact information in the, uh, Fire Department, which would actually, who to talk to to make this happen?
I need to ask you.
Yes.
Why are you?
You know more than I do. I only have two people, so anyway, I just keep pressing the same two people. Yes, I love this idea. Thank you for coming up with it.
Okay, Councilmember Orville?
Um, as a teacher witnessing the degradation of societal cohesion from the youngest members of society, I think anything we can do to honor those that are worried about their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, absolutely. But I don't know that, you know, if my spark of kids, kids do something, I don't know. I wouldn't put a lot of faith in that, but I, but I, but I, when I see people, young, young people that are, that are doing what they're doing, they certainly want to encourage it because these are the ones that turn out to either sit here or become the future fire chiefs, police chiefs, uh, leaders of the community. If not this community, some other community. And so, um, I, I don't want to have, have the memory of, yeah, when there was an earthquake and we did this in City of Riedel that ever did anything, that at least they thank. So definitely want to acknowledge them in the end. Thank you for that idea.
Good, thank you. Are there any, um, questions from?
Yeah, sue. Um, I would say put him in a parade. Um, if you can, let him ride in a fire truck, right? You know, I think that would be terrific in addition to giving them something on Sunday at the barbecue. Um, cause that's terrific and you're right, the kids need the recognition. It's also good to show the community itself, we've got these young people in our community and they should be celebrated. And I would also encourage following it up. When school goes back into session, hopefully the schools are going to be addressing with the kids at the beginning, um, maybe in, in a group at the auditorium or whatever, the earthquake experiences that everybody went through, um, and talking to them. And it would be really nice, maybe at that point, to also recognize the kids during the summer, they were, you know, recognized in Wildwood and have the city come where the school, because there really needs to be kind of a holistic approach and addressing this with the kids a little bit. At the school, um, and so that's a really good teaching point in a little bit. And then you could talk a little bit about what the kids did and things that kids can do at home to, you know, be disaster ready and know where their flashlights are and that kind of thing. But it's a really good teaching opportunity and I say, let them ride on those trucks, right?
I think Carter's on the, I think he's on the volunteer pottery department now. He was two young then, but he was waiting for his birthday, so he could, yeah, yeah. Um, any other comments?
Thank you, my chief.
Are there any emails?
Um, in response to what you said about taking a holistic approach, I would even say send it up to HCOE and let the, uh, Office of Education know that these people, I mean, they may not all go to schools in the area, they may have different places, but just, and I mean, I don't think that's taking any part at all.
Oh, yeah, okay. That doesn't even require anything. That's just information and agreement. Thanks, keep us in loop. Absolutely. And now we will move on to our ordinances and special resolutions. Second reading by Title Only, um, and adoption of ordinance number four hundred twenty twenty-three, amending chapter two point zero five point zero one zero and two point ten point one sixty-two of the Riedel Municipal Code, changing the meeting time for the regular city council meetings from six thirty PM to six PM. Page forty-nine in our packets, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Orville, members of the council. So at our last, uh, city council meeting, uh, we held the first reading, uh, of this, uh, of this proposed, uh, ordinance. And so, uh, the ordinance is very simple and I will try to keep it short, which is moving the, uh, original start time of the Riedel City Council meetings from six thirty to six PM. No other changes. Um, so this was, uh, uh, the idea was generated by staff, um, and looking at some of our other uh, uh, comparative cities and other public meetings, uh, Riedel hold their start as being, uh, one of the latest meetings. So moving it to six o'clock, we think would be more convenient for the public attending, uh, for members of the council and for staff. Uh, and hopefully when we, uh, we won't have any late meetings, although we haven't had them, uh, super long meetings in quite a while, but they, they have occurred in the past. So starting a little bit earlier, uh, might be, uh, beneficial for everybody. Um, so with that, I'll go ahead and return to the council. Our recommendation is to open the hearing, or the second hearing, uh, see if there's any additional comments, uh, and then, uh, uh, consider that comment and, um, uh, move it to adopt.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, just, I see you've already got any agenda, but, um, there's basically, there's, there's, there's been, so that would be blocking them at all. That they know that that changed.
Correct, so any ordinance that is passed by the city council has a thirty-day waiting period before it goes into effect. Um, and so the first meeting where we would all move the time would be to six PM, start, starting time at six PM would be September fifth. That's all of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall?
That's fine with me, Rich, September fifth. He was here at six o'clock tonight.
Oh, really? Four point five thirty. Okay, are there any questions, um, in the public? Any emails? People can answer, any hand raised, any emails? There, thank you. And I would, um, ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number four zero zero that twenty twenty-three, amending the Riedel Municipal Code twenty, sorry, two point zero five point zero one zero and code two point one zero point one six zero, altering the city council's regular meeting start time, start time from six thirty to six PM. They have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. Motion carries five zero and after thirty days, September fifth, we will start our city council meetings at six o'clock. Council reports and communications, Mayor Pottin?
Thank you. Tomorrow at three PM, we have our business advisory committee, um, meeting here in City Hall. Three PM open to the public if anybody wants to come. Next, uh, thanks for the nonprofits this Friday, July twenty-first, at the Sosha Lodge from five to eight PM. They do this every month on the third Friday of the month, where they choose a different nonprofit and proceeds go to benefit that nonprofit. Um, this Friday is the Riedel Sosha Chamber of Commerce. So anybody here, anybody listening, watching, if you want to come on out and, and have a beer and a cheeseburger or whatever, um, you will get a really good meal and then also benefit your local community. So come on out for that, five to eight PM. Lastly, uh, Saturday, July twenty-ninth, we are doing a volunteer community cleanup day here along Wildwood Avenue. That will be from nine to eleven AM. The meeting point is at the Resource Center. We'll provide gloves, buckets, vests, garbage to pick up for things, um, and even some coffee and some tea and some baked goods and whatever. So anybody who would like to kind of spruce the town up, break up our Wildwood days and flush some weeds and pick up some garbage, that would be Saturday, July twenty-ninth, nine to eleven AM. I read up Monday, that's it.
Thank you, mayor. Councilmember Woodall?
Do the baked goods, do the, your chides.
You, I'll just, for you.
Okay, yeah, okay. I ordered more of that smoked sugar.
I'll be free. Only one of course.
I'm going to go to a board meeting with the fire department. And one of the interesting things that I thought was, I didn't know that they were putting the new bridge in, the chide. And also they'll be able to take all their, the bigger equipment across to fight fires. And that's about it, you covered it, right?
All right, you got it. Thank you, Councilmember Orville?
Uh, HGO meeting on Thursday, um, more to follow.
All right. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, we were supposed to have an HWA meeting and some of us went in there and some of us didn't. But they didn't, yeah, it was captured. And they didn't, yeah, it was canceled because there wasn't a call, so, um, they were doing, not they, um, thirteen eighty-three, so they didn't get, but they, they probably won't picture. And actually, uh, the RCA, that's all I have. Oh, I wanted to mention again, that if anyone's interested in being on the community act, uh, community advisory committee for RCA, that there's, uh, Riedel has an open place for someone to do that. Yeah, so they just need to, either, either contact and re-contact RCA and fill out a form and then what we're going to get them approval for that.
And is it any community member?
It is any community member, and I don't know if it works on, like, the council when you're on a little, really, community by any. I don't know what it is.
Still community member?
You're a community member, so I don't know. I don't know, so I just, I just, you know, everybody else.
And, um, I have a meeting tomorrow with the long-term recovery group, and, uh, sitting in the wire, and, um, city manager, and then on Thursday, I have a seismic safety commission meeting. And, um, uh, rather than going to Sacramento this time, I'm staying, I have to stay here, my foot. So, I'll be here, it'll be in the, I mean, they won't be here, but I'll be here in the chamber. And so, if anyone wants to come and listen or have, you know, whatever, there's a seismic safety commission meeting that will be, um, um, Thursday from ten to one fifteen PM. And that's a public meeting, so anyone in the public is welcome to be here too. And I think that is all. Um, when's the, when's the?
Oh, boot to boogie, that's, oh, yes. Um, this Friday at the fire hall, ten AM to eleven AM will be lesson number one. And then Friday after that will be lesson number two. And we need a review, I'm sure we can sneak one in on August fourth, but it's easy, yes, yeah. Thank you.
And, um, don't forget about the Friday, um, at Sosha Inn, that's a good thing. And they have excellent french fries, yes, they do, between, yes, they, I mean, they, like, really, really excellent french fries. You know, they're right there with Bimbo, the two places that have the best french fries. And Humble, Sosha Inn and Bimbo. So, um, with that, it's your motion to adjourn. So, who, you have a motion, second?
Yes.
All right, I want to say hi to Nancy Kerr. Okay. We're going to adjourn.